I don't know why.
Well, because I think it's a timeline.
Yes, there is a timeline that there's only a certain amount of cars available.
They're turning in like fourteen cars. Because they want so much time. You know, just if they present this.
And it's the next session?
Yes.
All right. Do we have the sheriff's department, or not the sheriff's, but the airport?
Yeah.
They were out there.
I don't need to do this. We got a couple seconds of five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Todd?
Five minutes is not really long enough for them.
Chris, we have public comment. Do we have any public comment today from anyone? Okay, check, let me check out there. We're gonna check. Because public comments in five minutes. I hate to have you start and then stop, so we're just checking to see.
No worries.
Yeah.
Oop, we're short here. Are we over capacity here?
I can, I can step down.
No public comment?
No, you don't have to.
Do you have a public comment today? No, me? Do you have a public comment today?
Um, yeah.
Not so far though.
He's with the airport.
Oh, I didn't know that. I'm sorry. Thanks.
Okay, so no public comment then? Okay, well, go ahead, Chris and Homer, come on up. I apologize for the delay in your eyes.
Hello, hi, Tony. Hi, Tony, nice to meet you.
How's it going?
Hi, Dickie. How's everybody doing?
Good. And you guys wanna introduce yourselves so Amy can report it for the lecture?
Uh, good morning, I'm Homer Lucas, I'm the president of the Portage County Regional Airport Board of Trustees.
This person doesn't need to be introduced.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Chris Gilmore, and I'm a member of the Board of Trustees. Just your average member, no type.
Okay, go ahead, please. Are you ready?
Yeah, you know, I guess I'd start, start the discussion with, say, how glad I am to be here today. Nice spring day, it's a short-sleeved day in March, which you don't see very often.
No.
Uh, I got my second coronavirus vaccination last week, so that's a good sign. And we're here to talk about the, an optimistic future for the airport, which also is the main reason I'm happy to be here today. So, uh, this is a, a result basically of some discussions we've had with, with Commissioner Bennett and Mr. Bragg talking about the airport going forward. And the airport about a week and a half ago was, I think, made a, a resolution to, uh... Homer, could you hold a second? Uh, I hate saying this, Diane and Barb, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave.
Ryan has specifically said he doesn't need to be here.
Two of you have to leave. That, that, that's pretty, pretty simple. If you get sent away...
Sit outside the door.
We just have two more, only allowed to have ten people in the room.
Oh, toll?
If I code, yes, right now.
Okay, well...
Four, five, six, seven.
I cannot leave my camera on. I don't have cameras.
Okay, all right, she's, she's gonna step up. Thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
So, as a result, the airport board passed a resolution authorizing dissolution in the county basically to take over the airport. And we're here just to give you our thoughts on that and where we came, came from up to this point. Chris, if I could turn it over to you. Chris is a, a past president of the board and a member of the executive committee on the airport board right now, so, um, if you would, Chris, go through.
So, playing off Homer, this is no surprise to anybody, you know, we've been talking about this for seven years, you know, ever since I've been on the board, about the business model that we have at Portage County Airport. And as Homer mentioned last month, or a couple of weeks ago, we did, you know, passive ocean dissolve the Portage County Regional Airport Authority Board of Trustees with a vision to the future to try to make the airport work better for Portage County and the communities. The one thing, and we've talked about this again, this is, this is like, you know, beating that proverbial dead horse, is the limitations of the current structure. You know, the, the business model that the airport has today is just not a viable business model. It might have been thirty years ago, but in this environment, it's not viable. You've got a Board of Trustees that is appointed by the commissioners, that has no budget, no legal standing, and is run by an all-volunteer board. So, we're a dog without a bark, without teeth, without anything. You know, we're charged with maintain, it's basically a custodial management of this twenty-five million dollar asset. That's what that airport's worth. You know, your pavement, you know, the ground that's underneath it, the buildings that you own or we own, is, is to replace that, it's about twenty-five million. And that's all documented in the Ohio Department of Transportation. You know, we've got a good partnership with the local FBO, who's our airport manager, that can't make money there either. You know, he can't even, the, the FBO has contractual agreements of Dick and I and the board have worked with over the years to try to relieve some of them because they're, they're egregious in this environment. So, the airport board can't make a go of it, the FBO and the airport management can't make a go of it. And we have a revenue shortfall resulting from, there's too many places for the revenue to go.
And the airport is not one of them, it's going back into, as far as the revenue stream. I mean, it's my understanding, it's, it's a lot of, maybe back in the day, it, it might have been a good business decision, but, like, for example, the long-term leases on land, you're not really making any money off of them. And at the end of the lease, you get those hangars or you get those buildings, but in the meantime, there's little or no income coming for a long term.
Yeah, the only income we get is rental. You got to either rental off land, rental off structures that you own, and some of the fuel flow. You know, and when you take all of this, you know, and I want you to keep in mind also that, and I'll give kudos to Homer and this board and past boards, is with no money, we've managed to break that airport even for a lot of years, except when there's been a catastrophic event. The hangar blows over, it is underinsured, you know, a fuel farm blows up, or, you know, the original fuel farm. So, to be able to run something that costs that much with no budget and break it even, even the FAA would say, we're one of the better performing airports because we're not losing, you know, I'll say, a magnitude of money every year. One of the last things, one of the last problems that we have with the current structure is, is we are losing and beginning to lose FAA support. Because the FAA looks at us like, you have no support from your county, your community, nobody's vested in this. And they're the people that really write the checks, and they would write the big checks. You know, if we would have been prepared this year for a runway extension, which is a big deal, or for any major infrastructure improvements, would have been paid for a hundred percent by the FAA. One hundred percent. Imagine getting five million dollars to do something from the FAA that you don't have to pay back, that goes into our communities here in Portage County. Regardless, that's the limitations we have of the structure. There's, and one of the reasons that we decided as a board, you know, in this ongoing discussion, we've had to dissolve the board and hopefully bring the county ownership back into focus to the airport. And what that changes is, you know, in conjunction with, you know, not only taking over the airport, but taking over airport services and airport management, which involves, you know, Portage Flight Center, is the county is in direct control of this airport. And it's the way it should be because the county and the communities in this county are the direct beneficiaries of that airport. Um, we've removed the board of directors, we've removed contracted airport management, where the county has a direct line of sight to that, which is what's really needed. And so, when you look at the future outlook, what I would say, we didn't bring, you know, the, the long-range plans or anything, you know, I shared some of that with Tony last week, and I think that, you know, everybody is seeing the long-range plan that's been done with the airport is, is what that, that mission and vision is, is listed out there, you know, safe, sufficient, quality aviation facilities for Portage County and its community and its citizens. And it's not, you know, when we think of community, you know, when I think of Streetsboro, Aurora, Manaway, all of the different communities here, that an airport is important. It is important to have that because once we lose the airport, if we do lose the airport, it's never coming back. Never. I mean, it, it is an asset that we, as a county, certainly don't want to lose or see, you know, deteriorate. You know...
Well, Chris, I think one of the biggest comments that really sticks to me is when the state did a study on all the county airports, I think it was like in 2014, and one of the things they kept stating about our airport is, it's very underutilized for, for the opportunities that it has. And again, it's because of our restrictions and limitations, because of the way, I think, the structure we have it up. I mean, we have a multimillion dollar asset that we try to run on a budget of, of a little over a hundred thousand, isn't that correct? I mean, how are we gonna maintain that size of an asset on that kind of a budget?
Yeah, and, and I think the other thing, I think, to paraphrase maybe what Chris is talking about too, is the county's gonna see benefits out of the airport that economically a, a business can't, you know? The, the benefit to, to draw businesses in or, or to increase employment in the county, those are things I think that the airport can affect indirectly. That, that you can't, you know, to run an FBO or to lease properties or stuff like that, you really can't see that firsthand. But the county can reap that benefit of it from the airport.
Yeah, and I could say firsthand, you know, operating a business in Portage County, you know, we've seen our employment go from, you know, fifteen to seventy here, and we use aviation in our business, you know, all the time. It's very important to that business. And it's not just moving executives, we use it to move our service techs around, to get to customers, to take care of customers, so it is, it is a meaningful asset to have.
Where do you, where do your service techs fly out of now?
They fly out of Portage.
So, you can still use the aircraft that you have?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And it's not, the, the important thing, I think, that is, as you look to the future of the airport, it's not just about people flying airplanes. It is about the community and having that airport being a contributor to the community because, and, and again, this is all stuff that we've talked about before, is I'm graduating from Crestwood in Manaway, and I'm not necessarily going to college, what are my options? Right? And you've got an airport ten miles away that could provide all kinds of opportunity. You know, you know, you know, I think Dick could attest to what an airplane mechanic makes, of which we don't have enough. You know, these guys are making seventy, eighty, a hundred thousand dollars a year that could be trained at your local airport.
And Sabrina, you've seen the, the paint shop there, they care about custom aviation. I mean, they really do good work there nationally.
They pay from all across the world, yeah, they're covering the world, yeah.
So, that's one of the reasons why, and I'll say, the main reason dissolving the board was to give the opportunity for the airport to have a future. Because again, the, the, and that's the, the simplest way to look at it, the economic model is no longer viable to have a Board of Trustees being a custodian of your, what is, in the end, your asset, with all these different contracted entities trying to make a go of it. It just, it, it just, you know, it's just not delivering the return it should deliver for the county, its communities and citizens, without a doubt.
Do we know how much it would cost the county to begin to make that viable? Any estimate or guess?
When, you know, for sure, that's a, that's a pretty big question because there's multiple layers within that question. You know, you know, some people would say the first thing you have to do to make it viable is extend the runway to five thousand feet, uh, which is a big, which is a big deal.
Undertaking, yeah.
Right. There's baby steps along the way that you do to make that viable. You get full-time county qualified airport management. You know, somebody that knows how to manage an airport, that's an employee of the county...
We need help with that, Chris.
Yeah, that, that is, that steward of the airport that builds those relationships with the FAA and ODOT, because we don't want to pay for stuff we can get quote-unquote "with grants." Uh, but today, as an airport board, is anybody on our airport board, who's all volunteers, full-time working with the FAA on a weekly basis?
No.
No. But that's, that's like step one. Step two is what can we do with the infrastructure to generate revenue? You know, if this is all under county management and the county, and the airport manager has control of fuel sales, you've got revenue. Then, you know, depending on how this transpires, you've got more hangars, you have revenue. Then we can look at, if we need more hangars, to build some that generates revenue. We can take expenses that cost us a lot of money and defray some of those expenses by hopefully contracting with county agencies that already have all this equipment to, hey, can we do a crack seal and, or a crack seal and seal coat on the aprons? And how much would that... Do you see, it, it makes all those resources one degree away from the county, instead of for us, it's six degrees away. So, Tony, you know, what's that number?
I just, that's what I wanna, because it is a public meeting, get people thinking of what we're actually doing with the airport, the steps, the baby steps that we need to do.
And I think we've, we've discussed this with Todd Bragg, we would look at it in phases.
Right.
Because we're, we're not gonna start out, I mean, the long-term plan would be to extend the runway, but for now, we just wanna make it sustainable and viable, do some repair, long overdue repairs, you know, like we talked about in Manaway Parkway, you know? Get some things in there, maybe build a hangar, there, there's a need for hangar space, you know? We hear from Homer and other people that people are calling all the time looking for hangar space, so maybe we start repairing the hangars, maybe build another hangar, try to get some revenue generation coming in, and then we, we do it in phases.
Right, and, and it's similar to what we've been trying to do as a board, but without resources, without legal standing, without anything.
Resources, the ability to incre, I mean, fundraise, basically.
See, and I think the thing that the county gets, and I don't think, I know the thing the county gets, and I know this just from benchmark airports, you know, there's other, there's eighty-seven other county-owned airports, some of which are rock stars, some of which are rocks. But when you look at the rock stars, it's all directly county-owned, county-managed, with a qualified airport manager who ends up, when he starts making enough revenue, builds a staff that allows the airport to move forward, and it does become a viable part of the community. And I, I see that as that vision, you know, it's not, you know, it's, it's not to change the rural nature of the community around us. Shaler'sville will always be Shaler'sville, Manaway will be Manaway, there's not gonna be... With development of the airport, the only thing that I think that the, the citizens of Portage County will see is opportunity. You know, opportunity for their children to have different careers that weren't there ten years ago, not jobs, you know, I consider a job McDonald's. A career is something that you can do for a lifetime, and you can take that skill and move it anywhere. That's the vision, that's what I think that...
I appreciate you guys coming today, I mean, we, I, you let, you allowed me to stop by, spare a moment for an hour and a half or two hours of your time, and your vision is exactly what I was looking for and what we, that can become.
And so, what we're doing is, we're, you know, trying to do our due diligence, you know, you passed the resolution like almost the next day, but, but again, you know, understand, we, we still have a lot of research to do into this, how it looks, how we envision it, we talk about different phases, and that's where we're at with it at this point in time.
Yeah, and, and we would welcome, you know, I think we, we would look like to supply input to that as you're going forward.
Absolutely.
You know, and one other thing just is in passing, you know, FAA grants and dealing with the FAA and all that stuff, you wouldn't, I don't want you to feel like you'd be out at the end of a limb. We have a consultant, an engineering consultant, that works well with us on that. The, the consultant isn't initiating changes, and that's what you, the county could do, but they're really good support as far as the technical details and...
And that's what we thought, we wanna gather all that we, and then we need someone to help us with the deciphering of it because none of us have ran the airport. And even though we have good people that advise us, we need someone that that truly is the, the profession. And, and that's the direction that we're sort of looking at right now, we're fact-finding, we have Joanne looking to get the FBO appraised, what it would look like for the FBO and the hangars that come with that. And so, we, we are working, you know, trying to get things moving forward because we need to take that information and then put together our plan if we were to take the airport over, how it would look. So, but thank you guys so much for coming in today, it's always a pleasure to see you guys, and Chris, you, you are just such a, you and Homer too, a wealth of information, and you know, you have that vision, and, and you've shared that with us numerous times, and I, I have to say, I think that's partly why I, I'm committed to doing something with this. Because I, I share that vision and you, you give us hope that we're not just taking some, a money pit back. And, and I know, I talked with Brad Earhart, he can't wait to start helping with this because he sees the economic development impact that it has. And even our budget and finance guy said, just by merely having a county airport, it, it makes it better for other people to get financing or to relocate here or stay here, grow here. I mean, it has all kinds of impacts other than, oh, it's just a rich man hobby playground. There, there's so much more to it.
There, there really is.
And, and you really helped bring that out for us to see, as someone who doesn't just use it personally, you use it for your business, I mean, you really opened our eyes to the potential of that airport.
And that, and that ODOT report that's something like six point seven million dollars in economic impact, I think, in the county, and that was, yeah, that was a few years ago, and, and that's the tip of the iceberg, I think, ultimately.
Yeah, and including, I guess what I'll share is, you know, as Homer says about that economic study and that six point seven and what it really should be, when you compare the demographics from Portage County, our manufacturing base, our population, and you compare that to other counties, you know, that are of similar size, we are, we are truly laggards with our airport. And that's part of that benchmarking thing that we did with the board, to say, wait a minute, Jesus Christ, I mean, you know, you know, Fairfield County has got, you know, sixteen businesses on the field, they've got a hundred and eighty people working at the airport. And they're the same size as us, why, you know, what, what, what's happened, you know? And so, that's part, as you get into your fact-finding, that's gonna be very, very meaningful data to have because it's eye-opening, it really is.
All right, thank you guys for coming in today.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch. And Homer, I tried to call you last week, I'm like, oh, disconnecting when I was trying to...
I was in a bad place.
I'll get back to you.
Yes, thank you, I'll get ahold of you, thank you. Everybody, have a great day.
Sabrina, I just wanna say one thing, since I'm public comment or whatever. So, you know, going back, and I, I agree with all this stuff that Chris said, very nice presentation, by the way, but it, it's, it's gotta start here, and it's never started here. In all the years I've been involved in this, the commissioner and the county have never got behind it, and that's why we're, instead of being a hero, we're a zero. It's gotta start right here with you folks. And if they don't have the resources, the matching funds or whatever, it's never gonna happen, so. Thanks.
All right, get your sheet out, Tony, you're not done yet. Miscellaneous assignments. All right, I'll go.
You go ahead.
The Board of Commissioners approves the March fourth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes and March ninth, twenty twenty-one special meeting minutes. Second. Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it looks like Janet has just standard journal entries.
Yes.
The Board of Commissioners agrees to authorize the full-time hire of Patricia Wade as a JFS job counselor replacing the position previously held by Suzanne Dory for Portage County Jobs and Family Services, anticipating start date is March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. The Board of Commissioners agrees that this hire is contingent upon an applicant who has been required for employment testing. Second. Okay, roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, the Board of Commissioners agrees to authorize the promotion of Lisa Walker, child support specialist to JFS job counselor, replacing the position previously held by Sasha Wilson for Portage County Jobs and Family Services, anticipating start date is March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Second. Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, now, down to Commissioner's journal entries. In accordance with ORC three eleven point two zero, the Board of Commissioners acknowledge the receipt of the Portage County Sheriff's monthly jail reports for expenditures and deals served to prisoners for February twenty-twenty-one. Second. Roll call.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
All right, and, oh my lord, I gotta read all these?
Mm-hmm.
What a mercy.
Come on, they go.
I'll read it, it's speed reading. Motion to accept the following in regard to clarifying executive session for raised throughout the Commissioners' meeting minutes during two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen as follows. Regarding an executive session held on Thursday, January fourth, two thousand eighteen, at ten forty-one, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held on Thursday, February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, at ten forty-five, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, at eleven thirty-one AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding the executive session held on Thursday, March eighth, two thousand eighteen, at two forty-nine PM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held on Tuesday, July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, at ten fifty-six AM, the words licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion, and for situations dealing with an appointment or to a statutory board, the word employee may also be omitted. Regarding the executive session held on Tuesday, July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, at eleven twenty-four AM, the words licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion, and for situations dealing with an appointment to a statutory board, the word employee may also be admitted. Regarding the executive session held on Thursday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, at nine oh eight AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held on Thursday, October fourth, two thousand eighteen, at eleven twenty-eight AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held on Tuesday, December fourth, two thousand eighteen, at nine fifty-four AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding the executive session held on Thursday, December sixth, two thousand eighteen, at ten thirty-eight AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an official session, executive session held on Thursday, December thirteen, two thousand eighteen, at ten oh seven AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held on Thursday, January seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, at eleven thirteen AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held on Thursday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, at nine forty-four AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held on Thursday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, at ten thirty-four AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. I only have six more to go, I promise. Regarding an executive session held on Thursday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, at eleven twenty-one AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held at Tuesday, January twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, at nine ten AM, the words official licensee or regulated individual need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding an executive session held on Tuesday, February fifth, two thousand nineteen, at nine oh two AM, the motion may have been stated as follows, for the purpose to consider complaints... the motion may have been stated as follows, for the purpose to consider complaints against a public employee. Regarding the executive session held on Thursday, February 2019 at 11:32 a.m., the words "official licensee or regulated individual" need not have been stated for the motion. Regarding the executive session held on Thursday, February 7th, 2019 at 12:59 a.m., the motion may have been stated as follow, for the purpose to consider the employment of a public employee. Regarding the executive session held on Thursday, February 21st, 2019 at 10:04 a.m., the words "official licensee or regulated individual" need not have been stated for the motion. Second. Okay, roll call.
Dana?
Yes.
Yes.
Toni?
Yes.
Okay, I will make a motion.
I would like to have an executive session.
Okay.
In accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, the dismissal of a public employee.
Okay, our second, roll call.
Becky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Toni?
Yes.